Mayor Jimmy Marina.
Here.
At this time we have the prayer and the pledge to be given by Councilmember Keith.
Heavenly Father, we come to you in this hour asking for your blessing and hope that as we're gathered here to take all the matters of this city and help God our city to success and greatness. Please protect everyone from these terrible virus that we're still dealing with and help us move forward in this.
We are citizens of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the approval of the minutes of the regular session, August 19th, 2021.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Ayes aye.
We have approval of the minutes of conference work session, August 26th, 2021.
So moved. Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes aye.
This time we have petitions, communications, a public hearing. With us today is Wendy Davis of 210 North Park Avenue, Clarksburg, wishes to address council on the roaches on Jackson.
Wendy.
Well, I was just talking to the city manager. It's a big problem on Jackson Avenue. Everybody's being blindsided by them. They can say they're doing this, they have false paperwork, lying about where the kids are, that the kids still live in the home. The roaches are crawling from their home. It's not just one, two, three homes, it's nine, 10 homes, coming up the hill, going across and heading to Grant. That becomes a problem for us because if we're treating and all the neighbors are treating and at nighttime you go out and you spray their homes, the roach home, and they're not doing anything about it but they're sitting inside their house or they're out hiding at their daughter's home, that's a big problem to us because we have to spend money and it's not cheap to get exterminated. All the different bombs, all the different gels, everything to protect our homes. And they get by with this? This is not fair at all. So, we did what we could, called CPS, talked to Jim Davis a couple times, made a report to the health department because that's what we was told to do. Today, there's a post on the city, that's the first visit that anybody has come. CPS was out there, they left a card. They lied about that. So, we have to come here for help. And I know there are steps, but I don't think nobody on this panel would like to live with roaches. We don't like it. And it's a problem, like a drug problem. Take care of the drug problems, it's time to take care of the roach problems. And that's how me and my neighbors, and there's more, I don't know why they didn't come, they said they were coming, but I can only speak for myself and the ones that are behind me. And we would like something to be done because it's a nuisance. You can't even go outside and stand on the sidewalks without roaches jumping on you. They've damaged Annette's yard from where they go and treat her yard, treat your own yard. You know, it's not fair and enough is enough. So, this is where we have to come. We'll keep watch over everything. If nothing don't get done, then we'll take it upon ourselves. I'm gonna get ahold of the governor mansion, I mean, not mansion, but Jim Justice, and if I have to go to 12 News, I have to go to the exponent, and that's what's gonna be done because enough is enough. And when you're being blindsided, we know these people, we've been with these people, I've been with them since '09, so I know how they live, they've been there longer. It's not healthy and it's getting worse. So, the problem needs to be addressed real good, taken care of, you have to babysit them and it's not fair to any of us. So, that's why we're here tonight, for the help.
Wendy, we have some other speakers, I'll let the city manager dress after everybody speaks, I'll let him make his comments if we could.
Thank you. Next we have Suzanne Sappington of 207 Jackson Avenue regarding the roaches.
Code enforcement and the health department, as Wendy said, are aware of this situation. I made code enforcement aware of this well over a year ago. My last correspondence with Jim Davis, my email was last November, where nothing could be done. And I understand that the problem is the distinction between owner occupied and tenant. I understand that and we all know it's owner occupied, so there's no authority to go in. But, why it cannot be deemed a health hazard? The carpet on their front porch is so soiled, you can smell it several houses away and it breathes and breathes cockroaches. If Annette was sitting there, she would tell you, she and I, one night to almost 11:30 at night, was spraying their frickin' porch to keep them from traveling, trying to kill as many as we could. I mean, we're not talking maybe 10, 20, we're talking in the thousands. And every time Annette would raise a corner, "Oh my God, Suzie, come look at the babies." It's horrifying, just absolutely horrifying. And you all know that of all the people, she does not need this right now. She has. It's just too much. But, I understand, I don't know how city code, if law, you know, if codes could be changed within the city. Lawyers go into courtrooms every day and find loopholes in laws to change things around to make it good for them. You know that. And I just, we're good, hardworking people. I've lived in my home for 43 years. If I'm gonna lose it, I'd rather lose it because I'm filing bankruptcy or my health is so bad I can't take care of it anymore. I should not lose it because of somebody's filthiness and their roach infestation. And I just, but I'm gonna leave you all with something to think about. Think about driving to work one morning and you got a roach crawling in your car. Didn't even have the courtesy to put a seatbelt on. Next time you look out your door at your pretty manicured lawns, imagine that lawn moving. This is just not some small matter, this is huge. And it's gonna wipe out half a city block, easily. And if the city can't do something, I'm sure that Jackson Avenue is not the only one with these problems. Think of what good you could do for the whole city. So, that was all I had to say.
Thank you, Senator. Nick.
Nick Metaphos of 218 Jackson Avenue with a conference problem on Jackson.
Jimmy, Jerry, Gary. I was raising this house. I sold the house to them, actually, you know, but it is a problem, it's a nuisance to everybody. I'm understanding it's gotten up on Grant Street now, you know, I walked, I park on that side of the street, I got a house across the street, but I park on that side of the street, I'll go to my truck and they'll come out of the grass and I'll kill them on the road before I get in my truck, you know, they're, it is a nuisance. We all got our own problems during the day and, you know, it's just going home and you have to fight the, you know, the cockroaches. But, later in the evenings around 9:30, 10 o'clock, it's their sneaking in, the daughter and the kids, right? I live across the street, I could see that way. I could see what's going on, you know, sitting on a porch. But if there's, Suzie Sappington, she got hit hard, Annette was next in line, and I got a daughter next to Annette with a two-month-old and a 15-month-old. You know, I hate to think about a cockroach crawling in her mouth, you know, while they're sleeping or something. But it is, it's a nasty situation, you know? Like I said, Suzie's been pounding, we just found out about this a couple months ago. Suzie's been fighting them for over a year. At night you take a picture of the windows, they're crawling out of the windows, I think I showed you a picture. If there's something we can do, let us know, you know, if we can help out. But Mario Oliverio got a house right next door to him too, and he's fit to be tied. The grass does move, I heard somebody just mention the grass, you can see grass moving. And I'm killing them, but when I see them, I've seen five or six, but I'm killing them before they get in my house and start taking over. It's when I see them, they're laying there dead on my basement floor, kitchen floor. And I'm across the street, and I can't imagine Suzie Sappington. And I've told her, "Yeah Suzie, I'm sorry, but I was raising this house and I kinda feel it's a little responsible, right? 205 Jackson." And how many times I've signed that, you know, my address, 205 Jackson. But, let's see what we can get done. I understand they won't let them, exterminators in their house, you know, we got, you gotta kill the problem first and then fight them, you know, you gotta kill the source.
Like I'm thinking, you have to kill the inside, kill the outside.
Let us know, we'll work with them.
Okay. Thank you all for coming and speaking, and that's what we're supposed to do in this community. And I'm gonna let Harry address this, I know I just became aware of it through Wendy, it called me and showed me pictures and Nikki has, and I'm aware of the problem, I did what I'm supposed to, you know, to go to the city manager, and he's doing what, and I can assure you, we're gonna do everything we can because I've been, I was a code inspector years ago and I've been through houses and all, and honestly, this is the first time that I saw, I've witnessed them outside like this, on the outside of the property. Usually it's on the inside, I've been in a lot of houses that had roaches, but to see them as much as the outside, so it's definitely a problem that needs to address. And I can assure you that Harry will take the proper steps to alleviate this problem, whatever we have to do, but I'm gonna let Harry speak because he's been involved with code enforcement, he's been over to see the problem, and if you would, Harry.
Thank you, Mayor. This was brought to my attention a few weeks ago, code enforcement started their enforcement, which is first, let the homeowner know that, hey, there's a problem, you need to fix it. The only thing that we have in our ordinance is you have to get an exterminator. Again, we cannot go inside the house to inspect the conditions. So yes, there were, you know, roaches outside the house. When they're outside the house, they're, inside the house is pretty much infested, they're in the walls, I mean, there's no way of getting those things out. So it is a bad situation. The only, we can only enforce ordinances, we can't enforce opinions or what people want us to do. The only thing we have on the books is you have to get an exterminator. And they have, they've had two exterminators, here are the pictures of the men doing the extermination as our proof. They were there twice, we do have copies of those invoices, and our enforcement is causing communication with those exterminators, and there's another scheduled extermination next week. But, you know, we've already issued the notice of violation to our legal paperwork, so that way if they stop getting the exterminations, then we have legal ground to start to condemn the house. My fear is that if we go down that road and condemn the house, we're not solving the problem. We condemn the house, the people move out, there's no one inside the house, no one maintaining the house, the roaches are gonna get bad. Then it's gonna get bad before it gets worse because that house is gonna have to sit for a good two years at a minimum before it can be demolished. So, we are working with the health department, trying to find a solution to this. Again, we can only enforce laws. But, I did speak to the homeowner, but if you say there are kids living there, sneaking them in, best thing to do is call 911. Get the police officer over there, they can start documenting. We need documentation, get pictures. We don't work 24/7, but the city does operate 24/7, but we can't be everywhere at once. If you see that happening, take pictures, send them to me, call 911, get an officer over there to start the report, documentation is key. But we are doing everything that we can. And when I was over there today, there were very good hundreds if not thousands of dead roaches outside the house. I mean, they're dead.
I wish you could, I wish you could come at about 8 o'clock, 8:30, just come over and just hang out.
No, there were live ones there too, I mean, they're.
Well, but night is better, that's when they like, tell them we're coming out to visit.
There were live ones there too, but I assure you that we're doing everything that we can, and we are working with the health department. But again, if you see kids going in and out, then you have to call 911, take pictures, document everything, let us know. Yes, sir.
Can I say one other thing? Oh, I mean, a piece of property in behind that house, they have a pool. I asked them to drain it, it was all over the pool. They drained it, but there was, I don't know, four, five, six inches still in the bottom of that pool.
Yes, I saw that today, code enforcement is going to hit them up for that, is going to enforce that.
How can I get that pool out of there?
Again, that's up to code enforcement. The code enforcement has to start a process. First they have to notify the resident, you're in violation of the pool, not being up to code, things like that, then they'll give a certain timeframe to remove. If it's not removed within that certain timeframe, then we'll issue a work order, we'll go in and do it, place that, move the cost onto the property.
That's a sewage, like that pool, water, spanking water on the bottom of it. And I've seen them crawling in and crawling. Alright, got you. Okay, thank you.
I do have one question, is the first notice or first report was in November?
That's what they're saying, I do not know.
But not, we don't have nothing on our paperwork that says something from last November.
I cannot answer that this time, I'd have to look and see the records.
It was just a week, two weeks ago that I was notified.
That's when I was.
Yeah, I passed it on at that time, but.
Because I had to report to the health department too, and I spoke with Chad Bundy about this on Tuesday, and he said it was gonna go out on Wednesday, but I don't know if he did or not because of the rain, you know, so it was so bad.
Yeah, I talked to Chad today too, they said they made two visits there and they're gonna do what they can, which is just basically clean up the outside, that's their jurisdiction the same as ours, make sure the outside is clean. We can go a step further and have them require extermination.
Mentioned something about children, are these children not allowed to be there? Or is it?
They're like hiding because children's services are involved now.
Okay, that's.
Because I made a report to children's services because I have a daughter, you know, and she's five, can't even let her go outside without the roaches jumping. We can't go out and visit our neighbors, you have to stay on the concrete, if not, they're gonna jump on you.
I was just clarifying, I just wanna know why they weren't allowed to be there. Okay, thanks.
Okay, Harry, then you'll stay on top of this and keep us informed. Okay. Thank you, thank you guys for coming out.
Next we have the city manager's report and update.
From the manager's office, Project Be Safe has launched. The city has partnered with Lowe's at East Point to offer ring doorbell cameras to eligible residents of the city of Clarksburg, have reduced costs to help make our community safer. There is no damage to report after the remnants of Ida came through our area. From the police department, the department responded to 2,483 calls for service for the month of August, and Sergeant Joseph Walsh has completed 20 years of service with the police department. Thank you, Sergeant. From the fire department, for the month of August, the department responded to 273 calls for service, 182 are medical related, total estimated for fire loss is $588,000. All vacancies have been filled and the department is staffed 100%. Also Captain Jimmy Green was sworn in as the department's first deputy fire chief. Patrick San Julian was promoted to captain, or Patrick San Julian was promoted to captain, and Josh Tompkins, Mark Walsh, Jason Stonaker, Jonathan Brady, and Marion Watts were all promoted to lieutenants. Congratulations to you. From the finance department, the sidewalk grant program paid out $11,050 for five sidewalks throughout the neighborhoods, and Sheree Greathouse was promoted to controller in the finance department. This position is the assistant finance director. Congratulations, Sheree. From city parks, the splash zone was patronized over 29,000 times this past summer, and winterization of the pool has begun. The Trace Atkins performed to a sold-out crowd of over 2,000 at the AMP, and the department is working with the Clarksburg Visitors Bureau for a potential craft beer festival. From the Robinson Graham Performing Arts Center, for the month of September, there are three private rentals and two publicly ticketed events. And the community theater's production of The Addams Family will be started to construct sets and rehearse this month. There are over 50 community members participating, performances will take place next month. From code enforcement, the department issued 33 building permits for a total project cost of 3.6 million. 29 notices of violations were issued resulting in one citation. Five structures were condemned and three were ordered to demo. 11 residential and seven commercial inspections were performed, and 17 vehicles were tagged for towing and five signs were removed. Animal control responded to 49 calls for service with 13 animals taken to HCAC and four traps were set. And Mr. Brown, our engineer, attended the annual West Virginia Rural Water Conference. For Public Works, repairs are ongoing at the Wayside Lane sinkhole. A new manhole was installed there along with 200 feet of sewer pipe were relined. The sewer department responded to 37 sewer complaints and replaced 65 feet of laterals. And crews are replacing curbs that were damaged as a result of the paving program continues. From the wastewater treatment plant, Terry Bell, the assistant superintendent, will retire on September 24th after 42 years of service. Thank you for your service, Mr. Bell. Alex Bombardier, Brandon Faust, Dave Hardy, John Strong, and John Wilson have all successfully completed their collection system certification, and national testing through the ERA has begun for our laboratory. That is the end of my report.
Next we have unfinished business. Consideration of second final meeting and public hearing of an ordinance by the city of Clarksburg, West Virginia to increase the annual gross salary of the city manager to $100,000 per annum. Notice has appeared in Clarksburg Exponent Telegram on August 24th and August 31st.
I will now open up the public hearing, anybody want to speak for or against this ordinance, may do so at this time. No one? I will close the public hearing, entertain a motion. So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes aye.
Under new business, we have consideration of a resolution of the city council of the city of Clarksburg authorizing application of grant funds to the West Virginia Department of Transportation, West Virginia Division of Motor Vehicles for a 2022 Highway Safety Grant in the amount of $349,200.
I will now entertain a motion. So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes aye.
Consideration of approval of the annual reports of the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021 for the policemen's and firemen's pension.
Entertain a motion? So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes aye.
Consideration of appointment to the planning and zoning commission. Brad Morris.
Mr. Mayor, I move we appoint Brad Morris to the planning and zoning commission.
Have second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes aye.
Consideration of appointment to the Fire Civil Service Commission, Joseph Schaefer.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we appoint Joe Schaefer to the Fire Civil Service Commission.
Have second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes aye.
Consideration of appointment to the urban renewal authority, Jordan Thomas.
Thomas. Mr. Mayor, I move that we point. Okay, we got a second?
Second.
We got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes aye.
Council call.
We'll start down on this end with Will.
Got a couple things, I want to thank Harry for doing such a good job, I think he's, you know, I've only been here for a couple months, but I noticed since you were hired as notable counsel that things have been changing for the better, and I hope you continue to do a good job for several years to come, as long as you'd like to be here. I'd like to congratulate Terry Bell for her retirement, 42 years from the wastewater treatment plant. And I'd also like to, you know, suggest that our citizens take advantage of the Be Safe Program, go out and get you a ring doorbell at a reduced cost. I'm disappointed in the cancellation of these festivals, I really am. It's unfortunate, but it looks like some businesses have stepped up, they're gonna do some things for the community, and I highly recommend you head down to the Bluebird or Pollicano's and be safe and have a great Labor Day weekend.
Thank you, Will. Jerry?
I don't have much. I'm disappointed, I mean, I'm disappointed the festivals are canceled, I definitely look forward to that every year. I understand, I'm glad I'm not in that position to make that decision. So, you know, that's a tough decision to be in, but hopefully next year we get back on track with that and we get back to where we was with that. And everybody have a safe weekend.
Thank you, Jerry. Wayne?
Just wanna, just wanna praise our city manager. I typically tell people that our city manager's like Johnny on the spot. Anytime that I get complaints, I pour them on to the city manager, and usually within probably about 20 minutes, I get a response and then usually within, you know, a day, things are set in motion. And, you know, you can't, you can't ask for any more than that. I mean, I know there's still a lot of challenges in our city, cockroaches being one of them, you know, and that's a big problem too, you know, drug problems, that sort of thing. I do believe, you know, with, you know, with his leadership and his responsiveness and working together with the community, I really think that, you know, he could get a lot accomplished and we together could get a lot accomplished because we also listen to him, you know, on recommendations and stuff. So, so thank you, Harry, just wanted to praise you on that. The only other thing I wanna, you know, say is thank you to Clarksburg Community Action. We cleaned up the Lee Avenue area there right before school started, and I wanna thank Public Works too. I tell you what, when you drive on Lee Avenue and you see those two lots that are kinda left of South Sixth Street across from WI, that grass was probably up to your waist and now it's completely cut, looks beautiful. And, you know, and that's, that says a lot, you know, when you, when you care enough to, you know, to make the neighborhood look good, you know, for, before students come, you know, then your students, your parents see that and then they develop a little bit of pride where they. where they keep the pride that they have for our city. Um, about Clarksburg Community Action, I think now, in the last three years, we've, uh, picked up over 30,000 pounds of litter and trash as volunteers, you know? We're looking over 150 different volunteers in three years. Um, you know, from encampments we've cleaned up to just regular litter on the street. You know, working with law enforcement, reporting, you know, drug houses to, to crime stoppers and, and, and just, and just a team effort between the city and volunteers and the, you know, and, and people in the community. That's really what it takes to turn this community around, you know? We, you're, you know, I always say Rome wasn't built in a day, but it sure collapsed in a day. But in order to rebuild anything, it does take time, but it does take working together and staying focused, being persistent. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Wayne, uh, Gary?
Man, I haven't been here for like a month. I'm so glad I finally get to talk. Uh, just a couple of things I wanna comment on, uh, Project Be Safe. Uh, you know, a lot of people ask me about that and when are we getting new doorbells and stuff? So I just wanna back up the city manager on that, make sure everybody heard that. We do have those now, so get your applications in. The people who are waiting should be getting a call. Um, comment on the, from the city manager's report, the splash zone, 29,000 visits this year. I mean, that's just spectacular. Uh, my daughter was a lifeguard there this year and what a wonderful operation for everybody that works there. Uh, and I'm really excited to hear how well the AMP did on this last concert. Uh, I'm sorry that season's over. I, I kinda wish maybe we were doing some of those in September and October too, when it wasn't so hot. We should try to extend that out later on. Uh, Craft Beer Festival sounds amazing. I don't really like craft beer. It's kinda weird, I think, but, uh, I know everybody does. I might go out there and get a cup and pretend like I'm drinking it, but not a big fan. Uh, thank all the new appointees to these committees, you know, these are all volunteer positions. These people don't have to do this, and they're really important positions. Um, so thank you to those people. Uh, I wanted to comment on the mural at the triangle, uh, down at Main and Pike. That looks spectacular. I was here for the last meeting, I didn't say anything about that. Uh, the artist that did that completely slips my mind right this second. But that absolutely looks amazing. What a change to that. You know, something so easy as that, you know, I'm all about these murals. We need to keep doing these because that makes such a difference on that corner that was just completely ready looking. Looks so nice now. I mean, it looks really nice. Congratulations, Terry Bell, 42 years and he's retiring. That's amazing. Thank you very much. All y'all that came to speak, you're the only one left, Mr. Tephus, but, um, this is a ridiculous issue. We do have, um, a lot of red tape, of course, that makes it hard to deal with things like this. But one house should not be able to be that big a nuisance and hold the rest of the neighborhood hostage. And, you know, we have a drug house ordinance that is written specifically for nuisances. I mean, it's not specifically for roaches, but this is a pretty big nuisance. So I think it may be possible for it to fall under that. I, I don't know. I'd have to go through it more carefully. But there's definitely moves we can make here. I know it's hard when it's a homeowner, but, you know, if, if they're terrorizing everyone, I mean, between a, a drug dealer, a couple of houses down and a house full of roaches, I'm not sure which one I'd rather have, really. I mean, that's really kind of a 50/50 there. That's pretty bad. Uh, it'd be really hard to live with, and I apologize to you, you're having to go through that, your neighbors. A couple, uh, had actually emailed me too that weren't here tonight. They may be listening online. You know, we're gonna try to figure out something for you guys. I, I don't, we don't have an answer for you that's perfect right now, I guess. But, uh, we can't let this go on. It's ridiculous. And just like these other guys said, thank you very much to Pollicano's and the Bluebird for stepping up and, uh, taking over where the Italian festival is not gonna be on. I'm really, really disappointed to cancel it. Um, I don't know if it really cuts to try to solve the problem, but it's their decision to make. It's not a city festival, so it's, it's their thing. So I respect their decision, but I'm, I'm not happy about it either. Uh, and I will definitely be down there at the Bluebird. Going to Pollicano's, we're done right after this, actually. Uh, we need to support these downtown businesses. I mean, these businesses actually prepared for this large event. You know, I'm sure they've stocked up and, you know? We need to go spend some money there and take care of these places. I might also go watch the Mount New York game at the Pollicano's. I guess they're gonna have a 10-foot screen. That's pretty cool. So go Mount New York and I'll shut up. That's all I got. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Uh, Lily?
I just wanna wish everyone, uh, safe and happy all weekend. Um, everyone be careful and try to avoid this, this fire. And, uh, I would take care of all the services the city and everyone who's retired for all the services that they, um, provide for Clarksburg. That's it.
Thank you. And I'll wrap it up, try to be quick. Uh, Jackson Avenue, that, that's what this council's all about, trying to, you know, we'll listen to what, uh, the people say, and you come up here and you definitely have a problem. Roaches on the inside is one thing, but when the roaches are on the outside, then there's definitely an issue. And I agree with Gary, if we don't have an ordinance that has any teeth that can do anything about that, I can assure you, we're gonna have the city manager work with code enforcement and try and figure out if we can draft up something that will definitely address an issue like this. But, cause this is unacceptable for the, uh, residents around this city that, to have to deal with that. So we will definitely, uh, address this issue, issue in the coming, uh, days ahead.
Nobody was kicking the bitch. I mean, it's, that was straight up, you know? It's the way it is.
Yeah, absolutely. We, we, we understand. It's, it's definitely an issue. Uh, I'd like to talk about the festival too, you know? I know everybody's disappointed. I'm actually the council, uh, rep for the Italian Heritage Festival, so I've been involved in meetings for, uh, quite some time. And I just want everybody to know that was not a, uh, easy decision for that, uh, board. They, uh, they're all volunteers. They all put in a lot of time and effort. And, uh, they were not doing that to, uh, you know, for any other reason than the safety of, of this city. They had, uh, uh, the Italian American Man of the Year was Dr. Marsh. Uh, he called and he was, he was supposed to go to several of the functions. And he said with all, uh, he, he could not do that with good conscience to come to any of the functions. And he pretty much advised, you know, with the spread of this COVID virus, uh, that it was, it was not a, a good, safe, uh, situation. And, uh, and I, I feel for the board. I, I appreciate the work that they did. And believe me, a week out, they did not want to cancel it. So it wasn't just because they felt that they just wanted to do, they felt it was the right thing to do. And, and I totally, uh, support, I'm as disappointed if you see my attire tonight. I'm, I'm wanting to represent the Italian festival, cause it's, it's a great event in, uh, Clarksburg and Harrison County. And it, it'll be sorely missed. And I also wanna say, the Black Heritage Festival, I've always been involved with, uh, these festivals as a vendor and so forth. And now as the mayor, uh, I talked with Jimmy Griffin on the night that, that, uh, the Black Festival was having a board meeting. And, uh, they, they talked for several hours of what they should do and so forth. So they canceled also, and, and believe me, those are two of the best festivals in this state. And we, we definitely will miss them. Uh, but those boards, uh, I think they did their due diligence and they tried to everything they could, waiting till the last minute. Uh, we've had this situation with the park board. I, I think Gary can remember, the park board was closing the pool last year. Uh, again, a very tough decision. Cooper did a lot of homework and they based, they based their decision on facts and numbers. And so they're not just doing it to harm the community, they're doing it to try to help the community. So it's, it's very unfortunate, but we're, uh, we're resilient and we'll move on. And, uh, it'll, we'll be back bigger and better next year. Um, Terry Bell, I worked with Terry for years. Uh, all the people that, that I'm working with now are coming to retirement age. And, uh, 42 years of service is a long time anywhere. And I, I respect and, uh, uh, I appreciate Terry's service to the city. I wanna talk a little bit about the paving project. If anybody's been out on the streets, we, we've done a bunch of streets, uh, this year. And I would have to say, this paving contractor we have this year, and I've been told by several of the city residents of, of what a great job that they're doing. And I, I've been out to several streets to, to look at it, and they are doing a tremendous job. And we're getting a, we're getting a bunch of streets paved, much-needed streets that, uh, that are gonna be nice and, uh, smooth, blacked off, uh, at the end of the day. I think we still have some going on. But that, that's, that was a great project this summer, so, uh, uh, other than that, I appreciate people come out and the citizens to come out and voice their concern. And we definitely, you're not, they're not falling on deaf ears, this council. And our city manager will do whatever we can to help our residents. And, uh, thank you, and I'll, uh, we have a motion for adjournment?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
You have a good evening, and I'll talk to you tomorrow if that's okay. Are you, are you feeling okay?
Yes, I'm good.
Hey, thank you, Neil.